Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall. Kirk Pankratz is the pastor at Church of the Harvest. He's going to lead us in the invocation this morning. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Pettis if he'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance, but would everybody please stand?
Let's pray. Father, today as our mayor and council members go about the business of our city, we pray your favor and your blessing upon each one of them. God, I pray that you bring wisdom, understanding, continue to enlarge the capacity of their hearts for the people of our city and our state. God, we pray that the very values and the beliefs that make Oklahoma City who we are shine through our leadership. We're so grateful for each and every one of them. We pray that our city will continue to be a shining light, not only across our state, but across our nation. And so we ask for your favor and your wisdom and your blessing. Oh, by the way, Lord, we also ask to keep the Oklahoma City Thunder healthy and winning more games, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
It is National Wear Red today, which you probably had figured out that these women didn't all wear red by coincidence. If you all would come forward, we have the American Heart Association representatives here throughout our city. I noticed Councilwoman Sawyer is wearing red as well. We have a resolution, I'll ask the clerk to read it as we get settled up here.
Whereas heart disease is the number-one killer of women, and yet 80 percent of cardiac events can be prevented. Whereas an estimated 44 million American women are affected by cardiovascular diseases, and they cause one in three female deaths each year, or approximately one woman every minute. Whereas heart disease, which often goes undiagnosed, kills more women than all forms of cancer combined. Ninety percent of women have one or more risk factors for developing heart disease, yet only one in five American women believe that heart disease is her greatest health threat. Whereas women comprise only 24 percent of participants in all heart-related studies, even though statistics show more women than men have died each year from heart disease. Whereas women are less likely to call 911 for themselves when experiencing symptoms of a heart attack than they are if someone else were having a heart attack. Women involved with the American Heart Association's Go Red for Women movement live healthier lives, and nearly 90 percent have made at least one healthier behavior change to improve their heart health. Whereas Go Red for Women is asking all Americans to go red by wearing red and speaking red. Get your numbers, ask your doctor to check your blood pressure and cholesterol, own your lifestyle, stop smoking, lose weight, exercise, and eat healthy. Realize your risk. Women think it won't happen, but heart disease is the cause of one in three female deaths each year. And educate your family, make healthy food choices for you and your family, teach your kids the importance of staying active. And don't be silent, tell every woman you know that heart disease is their number-one killer. Raise your voice at GoRedForWomen.org. Now therefore Mick Cornet, the mayor of the city of Oklahoma City, does hereby proclaim Friday, February 6th, as National Wear Red Day in Oklahoma City, in recognition of the importance of the ongoing fight against heart disease and stroke.
Let's show our appreciation for these women who are drawing attention to American Heart Association's needs. And Chelsea Milky is here, and Chelsea, you're a survivor of this very issue.
I am. Thank you so much for having me and allowing me to speak, and forgive me in advance because I get teary-eyed. About two years ago, I decided, I turned 40, I needed to lose some weight, get healthy, start eating better, started exercising, and I was having some problems with my blood pressure, a little bit of back pain, and some swelling. I passed it off for a little bit and finally decided to go see my primary care doctor, and fortunately, he paid attention to what my family history was. And my mother died at the age of 49 of an aortic dissection. I have a great aunt who died of an aneurysm. So he immediately ordered an echocardiogram, which is an ultrasound of your heart, and sure enough, I had a 4.7-centimeter aneurysm, and I was missing a valve. I had a birth defect that I never knew that I had. I have three children, and I survived all of them, thank you. But on February 27th, 2012, I had open-heart surgery, and, sorry, I have a mechanical valve, and they repaired my aneurysm. So what Go Red means to me is life, that now I can be a grandmother to my granddaughter that's going to be born this year, and I'm able to be a grandmother that my kids never had. So I'm very thankful for Go Red and what this mission is. And I'm very blessed that my friends and family wear red every year, and they share my story, and if it just saves one person. And so I'm just very thankful for all these ladies and everything that they do, and I'm part of the Passion Committee, and it's just an honor to be in the presence of so many women who share the passion that I do, and being able to just get the word out that this is a serious issue, and there's so many women that are losing their lives. So, thank you so much, I appreciate everything.
Thank you. Let's show our appreciation, story and how many people you're helping out there. Not yet, not yet. Dr. Bowman, why don't you give us some marching orders? What do you want us to do now?
That's what I want everybody to do, is start marching. Heart disease is preventable, and Mayor Cornet and I have talked about this so often. We just need to take care of the risk factors, you know? This is largely preventable for men and for women. Women always take care of everyone else and don't realize it's our risk. But exercising, eating better, you know, it doesn't have to be difficult, more fruits and vegetables, getting up, moving around, watching your cholesterol, knowing your numbers, and this is for men and women, know your cholesterol, know what your blood sugar is, know your blood pressure. Blood pressure makes a huge difference, increases your risk of heart disease and stroke. So if you are on blood pressure medication, please take it. One of the things that happens is people don't take their medication. So we can do this relatively easily, and we can do this inexpensively. If we will just, it doesn't matter what you do, walk, ride, swim, jog, you can walk in place. And our city is getting much better for being able to walk and do things that are healthy in our city. So please take this message seriously, men and women. For the women out there, this is a real story. Heart disease is not for older people. It happens there, but young women are dying from this disease and, thank goodness, surviving.
Thank you all very, very much, really appreciate it. Thank you, Chelsea. All right, we're on item 3A of the council agenda. First item is to approve my expenses for the U.S. Conference of Mayors. All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. Item B, C, and D are for the council and I to discuss potential salary changes for the manager, municipal counselor, and the auditor. Moving each of these items individually to executive session is probably in order? Okay, we'll take a motion on item 3B then? And I guess we can do them all at once, can't we? We can't, okay. We can't. That's what I get for trying to be efficient. All right, I'll take that as a motion on 3B. Is there a second? All right, cast your votes. And item 3B goes to executive session. Item 3C, is there a motion? All right, cast your votes. And item 3C goes to executive session. And item 3D, zero motion. All right, cast your votes, and item 3D goes to executive session. Item 4 is a Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the journal for January 20th, and item 4B is to approve the journal for January 13th. Any comments or questions on the journal? All right, cast your votes. The journal proceedings are approved. And item 5 is a request for uncontested continuances.
Mayor, I have several under item 8D1 on page 14, page 14, 8D1. Item B, 4420 Northwest 10th Street, we asked that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item C, 1802 Northwest 14th Street, we asked that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item D, 3037 Southwest 37th Street, we asked that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item E, 2304 Southwest 38th Street, we asked that be stricken, the owner has secured. Item G, 2732 Southwest 45, I'm sorry, Southwest 55th Street, we asked that be stricken, the owner has secured. And finally, item H, 8524 Northwest 86th Street, we asked that be stricken, again, the owner has secured.
Are there any other requests for uncontested continuances? All right, recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There are seven items. Okay, is there comments or questions here? Ready to vote the MFA? All right, cast your votes. MFA passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OC-MFA and convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority, four items. All right, comments or questions on the PPA?
Honor, I'd just like to make a comment on the PPA-A, which is a contract between the city and the central heating and cooling system downtown. And it goes into, it gives us some examples, or it gives us the basic information about how the contract will be amended periodically to reflect increases in cost. It's a little less explicit than I would like to have seen. I'd like to have seen the contract, perhaps, how that is going to be applied.
We'd be happy to sit down with you on those provisions. We talked earlier specifically about CPI adjustments. We'll be happy to get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
All right, any other comments or questions on the PPA? All right, cast your votes. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCPPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Environmental Assistance Trust, two items.
Move the items.
All right, comments or questions here? All right, cast your votes on the EAT. It passes unanimously. We'll adjourn the OCEAT and reconvene the council meeting with a consent docket. All right, are there any individual considerations?
I'd like to mention item F, please.
F, as in Frank?
Yes.
And Mayor, I think just collectively, I'd like to mention item U through AC.
U?
U through AC, just a general comment.
Okay.
I'd like to vote on U separately.
Item U separately, okay. All right, David, you want to get started with item F?
Yes, sir, thank you. Well, really mainly on behalf of the citizens of the neighborhoods affected by the tornado back in 2013, and unfortunately, the impact that had on the streets. Want to thank the staff for their efforts to get these streets resurfaced and reconstructed. I do have a question. The total amount of area being covered is approximately 10 lane miles, and the estimated cost is 20 million, 2 million. So can we say that the average cost is roughly, let's see, whatever that would be?
$100,000 per lane mile for residential street? That's probably about right.
Okay, well, thank you, that's good information, be able to take back to the citizens when they bring the issue up. Thank you.
It was important. We recognize the impact of the heavy construction down there. I mean, you're trying, those impacted citizens are trying to get their lives back in order, and they're rebuilding their homes and such, but really, the amount of construction traffic that was down there, well, first of all, the debris removal, heavy equipment that was down there, and then following that with all the heavy equipment to rebuild the house has really had an impact on the streets.
I agree, and one thing that some people not directly affected by this find difficult to understand is that the construction was not a quick, within a quick timeframe, you know, with the insurance proceeds issues and things like that, some of that reconstruction just recently was completed, so I think now's a great time to begin working on these repairs. Thank you.
All right, Meg, items U through AC.
Yeah, Mayor, just a quick comment, as, you know, I was reviewing the agenda, I was really struck by this list of items, all of which relate to MAPS III projects. I just wanted to point out how much exciting stuff we have going on. These relate to the streetcar trails, the state fair, the park, sidewalks, the Oklahoma River, and the health and wellness centers. And it's just, so we are right in the middle of some of the most critical things going on with each of these projects, and so I just wanted to reference for those that aren't kind of following this on a day-to-day basis. All of the subcommittees are working so hard to deliver great product to our citizens, and even though we're not seeing yet so many things come directly out of ground, there is a tremendous amount of work going on.
Thank you for those comments. Well, we have a motion in a second. Why don't we make that motion for all items except U? No, we have a couple of people that have signed up to speak, and then we'll vote on item U separately. We have a couple of people that have signed up to speak. Okay, Clayton and Mel, here.
Good morning.
Good morning. We will need your name and address for the record.
Sure, my name is Clayton Ketter. I can reach 101 North Robinson, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73102.
Okay.
I'm here along with my colleague, Mel McVeigh. We're from the Law Firm of Phillips Murray here in town, and we represent Brookfield Equipment Corporation, who was one of the bidders on the streetcar project. Currently, the city staff ranked the various proposals. Inacon was, of course, ranked first. Brookfield has a second and third ranked proposals to provide the actual streetcar vehicle. We have some questions remaining about the process and the choices that are being made, and want to bring those to your attention before the vote is made, and not just on behalf of Brookfield, but as citizens of Oklahoma City. You know, we work downtown here and plan on using the streetcar, and want to make sure that the process goes through, and we make a good decision here, especially given the amount of contract that's at issue, which is in excess of $20 million. The first is question as far as the actual design of the streetcar. The proposal required, the request for proposals required that the motor be mounted in a resilient fashion, which means that it's mounted in such a way that there's a buffer around the actual motor that protects the motor from vibrations. There are two different ways you can do this. You can either use the suspension and mount the motor in a rigid fashion. Brookfield presented two proposals that were in that fashion, which they now call the rigid-mounted fashion. It's our understanding from city staff that that is not compliant with the request for a proposal. The other way uses an actual buffer around the motor itself, sort of a second layer of protection in addition to the car suspension. So you get protection from the vibration in the suspension, as well as the way the motor's actually mounted to the vehicle. Again, we presented two proposals that way, which are currently ranked the second and third. Inacon's was not specific on whether they were resiliently mounted or rigidly mounted. It's our contention that that question should be answered before the process goes forward, and we'd be certain on what we're getting, because again, two of Brookfield's proposals were not ranked as being noncompliant, and there are indications that what Inacon is proposing is the rigid-mounted, because their proposal states that they're going to use the same motor and gearbox that are in use in Portland and Seattle in their streetcars. We know for a fact that those are rigidly mounted setups, again, which city staff has deemed to be noncompliant here. So given the amount at issue, we just want to make sure that those questions are fully answered, vetted, before we go forward. The second thing is, we think it's important to know who we're buying from here. Now, Inacon's proposal reveals that they are a Czech company based in the Czech Republic. It doesn't disclose, though, that they're in the final stages of being purchased by the Chinese. And when I say Chinese, I mean the Chinese government. They're currently buying a controlling stake in Inacon. So very soon, Inacon's going to be a Chinese company owned by the Chinese government. And that raises a number of questions as far as what we're getting. Are we going to get, you know, a car built in Europe? Are we going to get a car built in China? Inacon already has a plan in China, and also down the road, we're going to live with these cars for a long time. It's important to know where our parts are coming from, where our service is coming from. Are those parts that we order in the future going to be Chinese parts we're getting? Is service, when we call for help, are we going to call and have to speak to someone in China? These are important considerations to have, let alone that tax dollars, rather than staying here in America, are now going to go overseas into the pocket of the Chinese government. There's also the question of Buy America. Now, I know that wasn't a requirement at this current stage, but Oklahoma City's growing, I imagine the streetcar will eventually expand. There may be federal funds available at that time, and there's questions of whether we're dealing with a Chinese company and have Chinese cars or European cars, whether we'll be able to qualify for those federal funds down the road. Those questions aren't really at stake, though, with Brookfield, which again has a second and third. Brookfield's based in Brookfield, Pennsylvania, they've been in business in America for over 90 years, have supplied over 60 streetcars here in North America. You know, everything is designed, manufactured, tested here in America. It supplies American manufacturing jobs, which I think we can all agree is important. And so given that other option that's out there, we think it's important that these questions be raised to you and addressed before this process is completed.
Right, thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
Mike, David, either one of you want to come up and address the concerns that he presented to us?
We can't. Mayor, you know, we went through a process, and we're still going through the process, and this isn't finally deciding that. If you want some more information on some of the technical aspects that were brought up here, Rob Edgecombe from Jacobs Engineering is here, who can describe some of these, but we're confident that the process that we're going through is the process, and as we complete that and talk with Inacon, we will flesh out these things that were brought up today.
What we are, let's be clear, what we are doing today is an authorization to negotiate. We're not actually purchasing the cars. And so if we get through the process, it could fall out, we don't know that at this point in time, but they were, through the process, a large group of folks, they were clearly the number-one selected entity, and we believe that we can work through these issues, but if we can't, then we'll go back to second, third.
Okay. I know Mark Gibbs is here also from the subcommittee. Mark, do you want to come up? Go ahead, David, finish while Mark's.
Can I ask David a quick question? On the Buy America requirements, what percentage has to be, if there was, if we were seeking federal funds in the future for an expansion, what, how does that work? What percentage has to be?
You know, I'm really not well-versed on that, since we are doing just a local-funded thing, but Rob could speak to that if that's all right. Rob?
Okay.
This is Rob Edgecombe, he's with Jacobs Engineering.
Good morning, everybody. The percentage on FTA has been changing recently. I think it's, it went from a 50 to a 60 percent. I may not be exactly accurate on that. What it breaks down to is the, some key elements of the vehicle. So for example, things like the assembly of the body shell, and there are certain elements that have to be in there to get a total percentage, but there are different rules, but depending on which part of the Department of Transportation you work with. So there would be a requirement of, I think it's 60 percent, would have to be domestic content for a Buy America compliance. The, we didn't require Buy America compliance, because this isn't a federally funded program. In the RFP process, we did ask people what their Buy America compliance was, and we also had proposals from various people where they explained what they could do to increase their Buy America content if required. So a couple of the manufacturers proposed domestic production locations that they could use if required. In what we have on the table for the proposal at the moment, and what's being discussed this morning, that is not being domestically produced. So they proposed another way that it could be, but we are not going forward on the basis for this procurement.
Would you, in an expansion, would you consider just the cars, or it would be the total cost, like including the rails and the ground, so if the rails and the ground were?
The project as a whole, anything that was funded by the federal government would, all of that would be included in the process, but certain elements have to be, so vehicles would need to be compliant. And we would want to run a new procurement at that stage to see what the best the market had to offer for the next round of vehicles. It doesn't have to be the same vehicle supplier. Just to give you an example of one of the benefits that that competition would bring, when we're talking about the support of the vehicles, a large portion of the support cost is actually the subsystems. So while you talk, think about buying the vehicle itself, the body shell is sort of an upfront cost, but that doesn't cost you much throughout, whereas it's things like the door systems, the lights, the power systems, all of those are the elements where you have ongoing cost. And most of the manufacturers go to the same sort of pool of people to use for those sort of systems, so, and most of those, excuse me, have domestic supply bases. So when we were looking at the RFP evaluation, for example, we looked at not just, sorry, I'm focusing too much on everyone else, but the, we didn't just look at the vehicle as a whole, we broke it down by each of the subsystems, and we were looking at who the manufacturer was, what the track record was of that manufacturer, how well-established they were in supporting the vehicle domestically. And so when we evaluated all of them, we were looking at those support issues. And so when we, if we were to look at another bidder for a future expansion, we'd be looking at the same thing, whether they have the same sort of support infrastructure that we have with our, whatever vehicle we end up with from this program.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mark, I know the subcommittee spent a lot of time on this issue. You want to just reflect on what you guys have gone through? And Mark Gibbs is with our citizen-led streetcar subcommittee.
Mark Gibbs, 601 North Broadway, as the mayor said, I'm on the MAPS III Subcommittee for the streetcar, and I was also on the evaluation panel. It's a fundamental fact, I'm afraid, that in this very competitive industry, whenever there's procurements of streetcar, it seems that they're often challenged. And one thing I really want to emphasize is how thorough and scrupulous the process was, it was designed by the city and by the consultants. In the transit advocacy community, we often get frustrated about how slow the process seems to be going, but I can assure you, the process was very thorough and was specifically designed to handle such situations that may occur. And I was particularly impressed by the technical expertise that came to bear. One, a few other quick things I'll mention out, this is very much a global industry. We looked at the subsystems, not just the manufacturer itself, which is really essentially an integrator, but the subsystems, and it's remarkable how there was so much similarity between the subsystems, the same brakes, between manufacturers, the same air conditioning units. And I feel confident that a lot of work has gone into it, and as the mayor has pointed out, there's more work to be done as we go through negotiations, and I'm sure that the consultants will be working very closely to make sure that everything is completed satisfactorily.
All right. Mark, thanks for you, and please pass along our compliments to the rest of the subcommittee. Yeah, Larry?
Just an observation for the council's benefit. Last week, there was an article in the paper when this item came up before the subcommittee, and it was to be discussed and evaluated by the Citizens Oversight Committee last Thursday. And so being interested to see what was going to transpire, I attended that meeting and was, for the council's benefit, there was no discussion, the pro- there was no discussion. The protester did not show up and bring these points before the Citizens Oversight Committee, which I found to be somewhat unusual. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Any other comments from council on the consent docket?
Yes, just a comment, Larry, that the Phillips-Murrah folks did come to the transit meeting. They didn't go to the oversight meeting, but they did come to the...
But they did not go to the meeting, the citizens oversight meeting, last Thursday. That's the one I'm talking about.
Yeah, they did attend the...
Subcommittee meeting.
Subcommittee meeting.
Previous ones.
Previous to that. But I serve, as you know, now as the council observer on all those subcommittees, and I was extremely impressed, as Mark said, with the technical expertise that was brought to us by our consultants. You certainly have a level of confidence that everything we looked at was very carefully analyzed and weighed. And I think, you know, it's important to follow up on what the manager said, that what we're talking about today is contract negotiation. And should any of these things flesh out to be an issue, that will happen during this process. So, this is just a step in the process of finalizing who the ultimate procure.
All right. So, we have a motion in a second.
I don't think I ever heard an answer about the resilient, rigid, you know, of whether or not Inacon's proposal really was a resilient.
Well, we believe that they are, and that's one of the things that we will make sure that they are as we do our negotiations with them if we're so allowed.
Okay. All right. So, the motion on the floor is for the consent docket, except for item U, which is the street car. So, we're going to vote the consent docket minus the street car issue first. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Now, look for a motion on item U.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, and it passes eight to one. All right. Now, we're on to the concurrence docket. Any comments or questions here?
[inaudible]
All right. We have a motion and a second on the concurrence docket. Any comments or questions on any item listed on the concurrence docket? All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Now, we're on to item eight. These are items that require a separate vote. The first is some changes that we're considering that have to do with the threshold for declaring a public nuisance, and this item is up for final hearing today. Is there anyone in the audience that is hoping to speak on item eight A today? All right. How about a motion then from council?
[inaudible]
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight B begins a series of items that come to us from the Traffic Commission. We'll take each of them separately. Item eight B one is a traffic issue in Ward six, and this has to do with some reserved parking spaces. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. I think all of the items in item B are in Ward six and relate to handicap spaces. They all address a similar subject. So, I would move approval of item B one.
All right. We're voting on item eight B one first. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. You want to make a motion on eight B two?
Yes, please, Mayor. Move the approval.
Second.
All right. Cast your votes on eight B two. It passed unanimously.
Move approval of B three.
Okay. I know we're going quickly. I just want to make sure, is there anyone in the audience that hoped to speak on any of these items on, under eight B, these traffic parking issues in Ward six? Okay. We're voting on item eight B three. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Move item B four.
Second.
All right. Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Move item B six, B five.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously.
Item B six.
Second.
Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
We make a good team. Item B seven.
Second.
It passed unanimously.
And item B eight.
Second.
All right. Cast your votes, and it passed unanimously. That moves us on to item eight C. This is a public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. One item is listed on 46th Street, Southwest 46th Street. Is there anyone here hoping to speak on that item? All right. It's in Ward three. Larry, you okay with moving this forward?
I'll move, I'll move forward.
All right. Cast your votes on item eight C. It passed unanimously. Item eight D is a public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any item listed under eight D? All right. How about a motion?
Second.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item eight E has a couple of revocable right-of-way permits. The first is from the Red Bud Foundation to hold the Red Bud Classic. And Patty Anthony is here.
Mayor, while Patty's coming forward, just a quick question, maybe to the clerk. We had moved these forward in the past to the beginning of the agenda, and I think this is the second time that these were left in the back again.
Right. The instruction from Councilman White was through the end of the year until we're back to every, meeting every week, and then they would go back to where they were. But it's up to you.
I think I'd request that we...
That was our instruction.
Make them, or put in a request on next week that we move these forward permanently.
Well, we'll consider that a new policy, and if he had any comments on whether or not it's a good idea, bad idea, if you'll pass them on to Francis.
I didn't recall that it ended at the end of the year. It seems to me it's a good policy.
I think, I think it's been an excellent change in our agenda prep, so, thank you.
All right. Patty? We'll need your name and address for the record.
Patty Anthony, 1708 Bedford Drive, Oklahoma City.
All right. And tell us about the Red Bud Classic that you're putting on this year.
Yeah, we're very excited. This is our 33rd event. Can't believe it's been going on that long. It's a two-day event, April 11th and 12th. On Saturday, we have cycling tours, a 10, 33, and 50-mile cycling tour, and on Sunday, we have 5K, 10K, a two-mile walk, and on Saturday also, we have a kids' one-mile fun run. Anyway, we're very excited to be benefiting the Boys and Girls Club this year. As I said, we've been going on for 33 years. We've given over a half a million dollars back to the nonprofit community, and we're proud that we're one of the few running events that keeps all the money in Oklahoma City. Anyway, we're requesting permission for the revocable for Sunday and Saturday, 11th, April 11th and 12th.
All right. And it's in Ward two and Ward seven. You guys okay with this? All right. We have a motion then in a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
And we also have a request called the Adrenaline Run from the University of Oklahoma College of Pharmacy Alumni Association, and Lee Munoz is here. Come forward, please, and we will need your name and address for the record.
Lee Munoz, 629 Northwest 143rd Street in Edmund. We're doing our third annual Adrenaline Run. Do it there on the campus of the Health Science Center with the OU Campus Police helped us with security, and they helped us come up with a new course map so that we stay off of all the essential places. We do it to benefit the college, help the students, and expand research and such. And we're requesting a permit to do so.
All right. The race is in Ward seven. John, you okay with this? All right. We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. All right. Item eight F is a resolution that would authorize some of the beginning steps for TIF 11. This is around the Coors Ashore area. Any comments or questions here from council? All right. Kathy?
We have a brief presentation that actually covers both items F and G, and I apologize. The order of our presentation is, we're going to start talking with the South Central Business District TIF, and then talk about the Coors Ashore one. So, didn't know the order of the agenda when we put our presentation together. Just a reminder that this is the first step in the process to evaluate whether or not these TIF districts are an appropriate idea and an appropriate policy decision for the council to make. The way that we start the process is by appointing a TIF review committee, and the council will see that item later once we get the designations from the various taxing jurisdictions. It's just a reminder, go to the next slide. Tax increment financing is a local redevelopment technique that municipalities may use to fund specific public and private improvements. I think you guys are pretty familiar with the process since we just went through it on the Northeast Renaissance TIF district. Tax increment financing allows a community to capture the increase in property values from an area to help redevelopment in that area. It's authorized under the Local Development Act in the Oklahoma State Constitution. The term of a TIF can be for up to 25 years, and taxing, the taxing jurisdictions are very much a part of the process. As a reminder, the TIF review committee is made up of representatives from each of the taxing jurisdictions. So, this is each of the entities that receive a portion of the ad valorem taxes that are collected in Oklahoma City and in the specific area. There's also a representative from the city council who serves as the chair of the committee, and a representative from the planning commission. There are also three at-large members appointed to each TIF review committee, and those are picked from a list of seven names that are provided by the chairman of the committee. The first TIF district that we wanted to talk about this morning is the South Central Business District TIF. It is generally located, and some of these maps are not finalized. We just thought we would present to you kind of the general vision of what we see as we move forward with these TIF districts. But generally, it's bounded by Gaylord, Western Main Street, and the new Oklahoma City Boulevard. The, go on. Yeah, the generally, the, this is the map that we've preliminarily developed. As you can see, a great deal of the property is either owned by the city already, doesn't generate any ad valorem revenues, or will be hopefully owned by the city shortly. It does include the blocks of the Clayco development. That's the development, the redeveloped that's been selected by Urban Renewal for the block between the old California Street right-of-way and Reno. We call it the Reno-Hudson Block. And also, it includes the block where the new OGNE headquarters will be constructed. It also includes the block where the 499 development will be located, and it includes the blocks where the New Convention Center and New Convention Center are to be located. It is our hope that in this area, we can, that we will be able to use the entire 25-year horizon that's available for TIFs to help generate revenues, to help support the development of the Convention Center Hotel and the parking that's going to be required for the hotel and for other development in the area. Go to the next slide. And we included in your presentation some slides from a recent study that was done that discussed the development opportunities in and around the new Convention Center. We really wanted to take a look at how that site would work with the rest of downtown. And we worked with Populace to do this study and have presented it to the Convention Center Subcommittee and the MAPS III Oversight Board. These were the opportunity sites that were identified as a part of that study. As you can see, it does extend south of the new Boulevard for the purposes of the study, but I do think it provided some really interesting information and good information as we move forward and look at the kind of investment potential that is possible in this new TIF district. These are just some diagrams that illustrate the level of density that would be proposed to be achieved by the year 2025, increasing the floor area ratio, which is a measurement of density, to four and a half to five and a half. I would say right now, the density in the area is closer to two, and maybe in some areas even one. Obviously, the Mary Gardens Park has, you know, really no density, and we wouldn't count that in the, in the future. So, we're really looking at increasing the density along in this area, around the park and the Convention Center considerably. Here's a, just a concept plan for the development. It shows a mixed mixture of uses, residential, office, mixed-use, retail, a great deal of retail along the first, the first floors of the buildings to create that active street life. And it does, there is parking programmed in these buildings as well. The next TIF district that's on your agenda, or the first TIF district that's on your agenda, is the Coors Ashore TIF district. And this is an area that we've been working on for many years. We've done several different studies and plans over the past 10 years to look at development in the area. And if you remember, the studies began because we were interested in what would happen to this area when I-40 was relocated. A lot of the plans that came from the original work that was done were translated into the MAPS III program, and most significantly, the MAPS III park was one of the recommendations that came out of that original Coors Ashore planning work. Again, this area is generally bounded by the new Oklahoma City Boulevard and then moves south to the river. Western Avenue would be the western boundary and Lincoln on the, on the east. This is a map of the area. The majority of this area is in the Coors Ashore Urban Renewal Plan area that was created by city council in 2008. The blue hash, it's hard for me to see the colors from here, the blue dotted line indicates the urban renewal area that was the Coors Ashore Urban Renewal area, and the red boundary is the proposed tax increment financing district. Again, this is an illustration from some more recent work that we did to take a look at leveraging private investment in the area, mostly immediately adjacent to the North Park, the North MAPS III Park. Again, this development anticipates a great deal of residential development in the area with the opportunity for a pretty, a good amount of retail, especially adjacent to the park and supporting those residential uses. The study showed that over a 25-year period, we could anticipate about 1.5 million square feet of office, about 6,700 units of residential development, about 157,000 square feet of retail, and then about 152,000 square feet of adaptive reuse. The plan did anticipate that some of the, quite a few of the buildings in the area would remain and that they add to the character of the area and would, would make good adaptive reuse projects. The combined development value that was estimated in that study was about $930 million over the 25-year period. These, these TIF districts will help to implement the findings from various studies, including, as I mentioned, the Coors Ashore Framework Plan, the Coors Ashore Urban Renewal Plan, the Downtown Development Framework, which the planning department is currently working on, the Coors Ashore Leveraging Private Investment Study, and the most recent Convention Center District Concept Plan. So, with that, we really would like to begin the process to look at this and to have the TIF review committee analyze whether or not it's appropriate to move forward with creating these new TIF districts.
Comments or questions for Kathy? Yeah, Ed?
I just, I have four questions, two are related. When you create the Central Business District and it's within an existing TIF, does that, that restarts the clock on those particular properties?
Yes, it does. And it also resets the basis assessed value. Right now, the downtown TIF is receiving a small portion of increment from that area. That small portion of increment will be distributed back to the taxing jurisdictions and will reset the base.
So, related to that, what have discussions to date been like with the different, different taxing jurisdictions, specifically the schools?
We've had very positive discussions with all of the taxing jurisdictions, and especially with the school district. They're very supportive when we met with them just about a week ago.
And they're, they're okay with the restarting the clock concept?
Yes, they are. And, and they, you know, what we've, what we've talked about, and none of this has been finalized, but that we would establish a method for sharing the increment similarly to what we do in the downtown TIF district now. So, they, they receive a portion of the new increment in the downtown TIF district. And we've talked with them about establishing a similar system with these two new TIF districts, and they, they support that idea a great deal.
The geographic boundary of the CBD, is that, is that an enterprise zone, Urban Renewal Authority area?
It's both of those things.
Both of those, and a reinvestment area?
Yes.
Is there anything inherent in the creation of a TIF that just on its face would constitute an emergency? When we're, we had this discussion last week with Pete and Councilman Pettis. Is there anything just in, on its face inherent that would involve the public's peace, health, or safety, or do you just take it on a case-by-case basis when we're voting on the creation of a TIF as an emergency?
Well, I'm not sure that we look at tax increment financing as a mechanism for improving the public's health, safety. I mean, it's more about creating development and that that may improve safety and health and welfare. And, you know, obviously, we have overall objectives to help improve, you know, for example... example, health in Oklahoma City through streetscapes and improving walkability, but I don't think that that's necessarily the primary goal or the primary objective of TIF districts.
So, it's not the immediate preservation of the peace, health, safety, it's development?
I wouldn't think so.
So, in terms of when we, if this were to come back, we vote to vote for a TIF, to vote as an emergency, what would be a reason to do that?
We don't really need the emergency, and on the, I think you're probably getting at the Northeast Renaissance TIF district and the vote for the emergency, we didn't really need to have that emergency vote. It would have been fine to have it just enacted in 30 days.
It's just a 30-day difference.
Right. It was just a misunderstanding and a miscommunication at the time the TIF was adopted.
Thanks.
Pete?
I have a couple concerns. One is that one that Ed mentioned, and that is the restart of the clock. I think we talked to the other taxing districts in terms of, at some point, this money is going to start to come to you, and it's going to be wonderful. Just hold your breath, it's going to be wonderful. Every time you restart the clock, you have to convince them again to hold the breath longer. And I, you know, they're, it's a, they don't have a real vote, do they? They're just on a recommending body. If, say, if the library system said, "Don't do it," that wouldn't stop, that really doesn't stop anything, right?
They, that's correct. They are on a body that makes a recommendation to the city council. I would like to point out, though, that we've only restarted the clock one other time, and that was for the Devon Development, and it had no increment. It was publicly owned. This one is a little bit different. There are some properties that are privately owned and are generating property taxes, but the amount is very minimal. And that amount will return to those taxing jurisdictions and will restart the clock. On the, I mean, and it is a very small amount of increment. On the majority of the downtown TIF district, we believe that it will expire in about 11 years, and that that then will create additional revenues to all of those taxing jurisdictions.
So, this vote today doesn't restart the clock?
No, it does not.
If the TIF came back and the restart of the clock was necessary, that's when it would start if we voted to approve it then?
That's right. Absolutely.
But one of the things I would like, I would like something from the, I know in previous times, I've done some looking into that about what happened, say, several years ago, and the, I'm not sure the boards of the various taxing entities really understood fully what they were getting into. I could be wrong about that. Hindsight always is filtered through what's happened later, and, but I'd like to be sure that they understand. I'd like to see that some evidence, and I don't mean your word is not evidence, but I'd like to see some confirmation of that by, and the taxing entities are city, county, health, libraries, schools, what else? County, the county.
Career Tech.
Career Tech.
Career Tech.
Career Tech, okay. Because they're the ones that are giving up the money, right? We don't give up any money in the deal, because we don't have ad valorem, we don't share the ad valorem tax, and the portion of ad valorem tax we get's not on a shared basis, it's on a judgment basis.
Which is why typically, when we've created new TIF districts, we've had the ability built into the TIF to share the increment with the other taxing jurisdictions, or we've budgeted, and we've budgeted money for projects for them.
I understand. I just would like to be sure that there is a, and transparent, everybody at all those entities, all those people that sit on those boards, like I said on this one, have the understanding, or at least, we've made available the information so they'd have an understanding of it. I've talked to too many of them that really don't understand, and maybe everyone I've talked to could possibly be their own fault. I mean, I'm not saying that we didn't offer the information, or the TIF people didn't offer the information, but there really is a lack of understanding at the level that we, like the one that we sit on, about what you can do with the money, where it comes from. I think we've seen some of that in the surprises that some of the school board members received when they found out that money could be used at Emerson. I mean, they had no idea there was a fund of money there that could have been used at Emerson.
And I can assure you, we talked to the school district a great deal about their ability.
I understand, but whether you talk to the people like Larry and I, or you talk to the people like Carl Springer, or Rob New, is a different matter altogether, and that's all I'm concerned about. Well, not all I'm concerned about, obviously, but I am concerned, and I want to be sure they understand this restart-the-clock thing, because that troubles me. I mean, because that is a, that makes the clock illusionary, it seems to me. If somebody outside of their jurisdiction can restart the clock on them, and they don't really have a vote, all they have is just a voice, not a vote, that troubles me. And I'd want to be sure that those people that we're extending that clock on fully appreciate what that means to them. And don't take that as a criticism, I just want to be more transparent about it, because some of my contacts that I've talked to, and not just with the board, but with the other taxing entities also, have a very fuzzy idea about what it's all about.
And I can assure you, we try very, very hard to make sure that we're communicating with the right people and the appropriate people, and some of this is, you know, we've started down the path of TIF in 2000, it's now 2015.
You don't need to defend yourself. I am perfectly satisfied that you did everything you thought you should do. I'm just looking at it from the bottom up with this gift that I have of 2020 hindsight that says that maybe a better job could have been done of it if we started at the bottom and went up rather than start at the top and hope that that information filters down.
If I can make one point of clarification, and I understand everything you said, but Kathy made a point that I think we need to follow up on, is the fact that most of TIF 2, TIF 2 is the big downtown TIF. Most of that is in its 15th year of existence and will sunset when it was supposed to. We're talking three exceptions to it. Only exception to date is the Devon Tower, which had no increment on that site during that time, and now these two, which have very little increment on the site. But all the Renaissance of downtown, the things in Bricktown and Deep Deuce and up along Midtown and such, all of that is, will be on the TIF 2, which will expire on its regular timeframe.
Jim, if I could add one other point?
Well, James was wanting to talk over there. He's very patient.
All I wanted to say was, I'm a skeptic on needing another TIF to, for this to be developed. And so, what I really hope that the committee is able to do is to convince me that it's needed, that it's real, that this area is not going to develop without it. You know, I know we do the BUT-4 test all the time with TIFs, but even to create a TIF, I would like for the, a BUT-4 test, so, yeah. That was the only thing I wanted to say.
And Meg?
Just a quick point of clarification as well. The clock does reset, but also the base resets. And so, the increment that exists in the current TIF is absorbed into the existing tax base. So, the increment that will be distributed is that over and above what's generated in the new TIF. So, I think those are two companion pieces that need to go together. It's not just a clock reset, it's a base reset.
That would be a more significant point, it seems to me, if that money we're talking about redistributing was a substantial amount of money, and it isn't substantial in the grand scheme of things.
Okay. Pat, did you want to say something?
But I understand.
I have a question of Kathy that doesn't relate to TIF. Kathy, there's, I'm sorry, guys, but has been some discussion of Innovation District being established? Does that have, does this resolution have any impact on that at all?
I don't know. I mean, I think, I think we have to begin to think of the Innovation District as maybe not just a very defined place. I mean, you know, a geographical location, but more of an innovation community. So, there could be developments in these two TIF districts that certainly complement what we've talked about in the Innovation District discussions.
Nothing precludes the establishment.
No, absolutely not. Would help it.
Your Honor.
I had one other.
Okay.
Is the area that the money can be spent in bigger than it would have been otherwise? I mean, is it outside the development area? Like, for example, there is one of the TIFs that you can spend money outside, and that's where Oklahoma City Community College is receiving some funding, that's where the public libraries, that's where Emerson got money.
Emerson was in it.
Right. But it seems to me that when the lines are redrawn for the public schools, the public schools ought to be able to spend it anywhere within the public school district, because their need is not, we build them a Cadillac downtown. The schools, there are, what, there's one other, two other schools, Emerson and Capit Hill Elementary are the only two other schools in those districts?
I think so. You may be right. I don't.
And for them to be able to utilize that the way it appears to me they need to utilize, it needs to be district-wide.
Well, and remember, if we, in the downtown TIF, they also get a half, one half of the indirect increment. So, they can spend that anywhere in the school district. And we estimate that since the creation of TIF 2, that's been almost $12 million. So, they can spend that anywhere in the district.
I'm advocating that the new TIF have that same ability, and you ought to look at, I don't think the county's a problem, but we ought to look at city, county, we ought to look at the metro techs, we ought to look at all those and make sure that when we design this one, we're taking it into consideration where they might need to spend the money. That's a little, that's a little different than what it's been in the past.
There's two parts of it. There's a direct and indirect, but you're making a very good point.
I understand that, but I just want to be sure that when we do it again, we don't restrict the money to be spent in a certain location for entities that really sorely need to spend it someplace else.
Good point.
It is not.
Your Honor. David?
Kathy, this is a traditional TIF which would only impact real estate taxes. Is that true?
Yes, it's ad valorem only.
Yeah, and so, if you wanted to enhance that with a sales tax TIF, you'd have to go through a second process at some later point to.
Yes, and we'll consider whether or not it makes sense to include some, a sales tax increment district along with these two as we go through the process of creating them. We just really haven't done all the work on that yet. The sales tax piece is taken on a case-by-case basis, like we did in Northeast Renaissance, so it isn't, it doesn't capture like all of the sales tax revenues in the area. It's just that's not possible or administratively possible, so we take those on a case-by-case basis.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
All right. But the TIF would give the authority to use sales tax on a case-by-case basis?
Possibly. We haven't decided any of that yet, but that's a possibility.
We did that with the Devon TIF?
We, yes, we did it with the Devon TIF on construction sales tax, sales tax generated by the construction only, and we've done it with Dell, and we've done it with the Skirvin, and we have it in the new Northeast Renaissance TIF district.
And what that does is allows us access to state sales tax dollars, too. So, when you do that, that opens up some of the doors.
Yeah. It's the only way we can get the state's assistance on some of these development projects is by creating the sales tax TIF district.
But we all want to be friends with the general fund, so we don't, we have to be careful to go forward.
He has to remind me of that sometimes.
I do remind you of that sometimes.
All right, ready to move item 8F along? Kathy, do you have anything else in your presentation?
No, thank you.
All right. Let's vote on item 8F. It passes eight to one. And then there's item 8G, which is TIF 10. Cast your votes, and it passes eight to one. We're on to item 8H and I. These two are, have to do with the financing of our water projects. Jim, you want to offer any clarification?
Yeah. As part of how we manage the debt for the Water Utilities Trust, we do go occasionally and get loans from the Water Resources Board, the state entity, and there are some advantages of that. One of those advantages is they don't require reserve funds. When we go out in the market, we have to have reserve funds that are out there, and even though our credit is really, really good, we do a full analysis of that, and because they don't require the reserve fund, even though our credit's really good, it's cheaper for us to blend some water resource money into our overall debt package with the Water Utilities Trust. And so, this is two items. The first one is for $36 million coming out of the state drinking water revolving loan fund, and the second one, item I, is from $800,000 for the wastewater from clean water revolving loan fund.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, item 8H. Is there a second? Cast your votes.
I do have a comment on this one. As I understand this, this permits us to do what we need to do by borrowing less money. That's where the savings comes from.
That's correct. We don't need the reserve fund.
Okay. It's a, we talked about it at the Water Trust, it's a good deal for the city.
All right, that's a motion, and then on item 8I, is there a second?
Yes.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8J, I understand we do not need executive session here. Kenny? Kenny's gone.
That is correct.
Ghost of Kenny.
That is correct. Subrogation claim on insurance.
All right.
Your Honor, I have a question on this one. Is that $15,000, is that established by statute, or is it a city ordinance, or?
No, it basically is a settlement, but we usually settle it for about one-third of what the employee is going to get. If we did not agree to settle it, then we could go to a judge, and the judge would ethically, equitably apportion it. So, that's the alternative, is to not settle and go to a judge, and the judge is going to decide who gets what.
Thank you.
All right, is there a second on item 8J? Okay, this is, I do approve the resolution. It passed unanimously. Item 8K, I understand we do not need executive session?
Correct.
Would you strike?
Well, we need to approve the resolution.
Move the resolution.
On 8K. We just don't need executive session on it. It's within council's previous instructions. So, cast your votes. 8K passes unanimously. Item 8L, I understand we do not need executive session?
Do not.
Okay. How about a motion?
Move the resolution.
Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 8M, Kenny, would you like executive session on this item?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Move the executive session.
All right. And that item moves to executive session by unanimous vote. Item 8N, we do not need an update today, so how about a motion to strike?
Would you strike?
Okay, cast your votes. Item 8N is struck from the council agenda. Item 8O, I understand we do need executive session?
Yes.
All right, how about a motion then to move eight, not zero, but O, to executive session? All right, cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item nine is claims recommended for approval. Is there anyone here hoping to speak under any of the three items listed under claims recommended for approval? All right, how about a motion then to approve these claims? Cast your votes. It passed unanimously. Item 10 is items from council, and we'll start with an item that's up for final hearing today that was introduced by Councilman Ryan a few weeks ago. We have a few people that have signed up to speak on this item. Pat, you want to hear from the people that have signed up?
Well, I'll leave it up to you and your discretion and the members of council. We did have a public hearing last time, we heard a lot of information. As long as it's not repetitive, I think it's fine here. I have no problem.
Yeah, just three people have signed up, and they've come down here, so I don't mind hearing them again, although, you know, the public hearing was previously, there's no harm in allowing them to come back. And I'll just say that, you know, during this process, I think we've become a lot more aware of the issues of the region involving bicycle safety and bicycle cycling in general, and how it can be confusing going from one municipality to another. A lot of other laws that we deal with in everyday life are affected in that same way because we have so many municipalities that are embedded inside our city limits and throughout the region. And whether or not this should be something that ACOG should look at and try to get a little more synergy for the benefit of the riders is something that we probably ought to take up. So, I do appreciate those that have come down, and I know Councilman Ryan's been working with the bicycling community to try and make this a more workable system. And I don't know how the vote's going to come out today, but in the meantime, let's bring up the three people that have signed up to speak today, and the first is Bill Elliott. Bill, we'll ask all the people that come forward to keep their comments to three minutes or less.
Bill Elliott, 4418 Northwest 60th Street. I'm a board member of the Oklahoma Bicycle Society. We're going to talk about the specific ordinances, and ordinance D has to do with riding a bike between two lines of cars that might be stopped at a light. And in my experience, that happens very infrequently. Perhaps you have seen it sometimes, but I think the bottom line is, based on the frequency, is this, is this new ordinance really needed? Section E has to do with riding a bike passing a car closer than three feet. Well, typically, it's the car, based on the power and the speed, that's passing the bicycle. So, again, fair So again, fairly infrequent, there could be some situations where it gets complicated if a bicycle happens to be passing a car, and the car slows down, opens their door, bike gets hit, who's at fault? It gets complicated in those types of situations, so we want to be careful and make sure that these ordinances truly are making streets safer for bicyclists. I'd like to see an advisory committee of some type be able to explore all the various possibilities of how to make streets safer for bicyclists and bring those things to the city council. For instance, wearing a helmet, that's one of the best ways to, to keep from getting killed on the city streets when riding your bikes, and if we could get a bicycle ordinance that says all bicycle riders need to wear a helmet, I think we'd go a long ways towards making streets safer. This morning, on my way in, I rode my bike in, I know another rider I was talking to this morning also rode her bike in to the council meeting, and both of us were, had close encounters with cars. One lady was visibly shaken when she came in and just barely got missed by being hit by a car on her way in. No fault of her own, car was certainly at fault. In my situation, I was coming down Walker at Northwest Fifth, there's a bike lane there, I was in the bike lane, two, two cars passed me, one car decided to turn left, the car behind him decided he wanted to use my bike lane to pass and go on. Well, in both cases, both of us had attended the Traffic Skills 101 class and learned how to ride effectively in cla, in traffic. So my, my experience, bicycle classes for all ages of citizens is a great way to make by, streets safer for, for all citizens. Well, I've talked to you before about the League of American Bicyclists Bicycle Friendly Community Program. This is where we, we have submitted an application, the bicycle friendly community was, we were awarded the honorable mention, and we would like to work with the city to see if we, if the city would like to go on to the next level, the bronze level, and.
Bill, we've got some other people we need to hear.
Okay, so basically, this, these traffic ordinances might prevent us from getting that, so thank you so much.
Yeah. Hal McKnight?
Good morning, my name is Hal McKnight, 7200 ML King. I have the honor to be serving on the Oklahoma City Trail Advisory Committee along with Councilman McAtee and Councilman Greenwell. We meet quarterly, and we certainly invite citizens to come and be part of that meeting and to be heard. We certainly hold safety and health and wellness as a strong statement of, of our trails, and our trails are growing in Oklahoma City, as our sidewalks are. The MAPS III project, which is the West River Trail, will connect Lake Overholser with the river, and it's going to be a beautiful trail, it's going to go through a lot of wooded area, it's going to, it's going to have a very rural element to it as well, and I think, I think it'll be like Lake Hefner Trails, I think it'll be extremely popular. Our committee has also been working with Cardinal and with ACOG, two consulting firms to develop a study for wayfinding, for signage, trail etiquette, safety. Our, our trails don't have a good signage program across our city right now, and this will allow that, and we believe that there will be funding for the West River Trail to have this type of signage that will be put on there. So we, we have, our committee has been working on, on projects for, for a long time, and we're excited to see what is going on. We, we're certainly want to act in any way possible to benefits our citizens and to work with other city municipalities for communication on the different ordinances, and, and we can certainly take on any of these projects where we can assist, we'd be very glad to do that. But I think the, the key in all this is, if you're riding a bicycle, if you are operating a car, the two big C words, courtesy and common sense play a huge part in this. And my goodness, we live in Oklahoma City, we're not in New York City, we're friendly folk, we need to all work together for, for a common good, and I think, I think it's, it's wonderful that we have this great weather that we can all get outside in and enjoy our, our trail system. But our, our committee is open to helping in any, any way we can for communicating and working with the other municipalities.
All right, Hal, thank you.
Thank you.
William Drake?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I'm William Drake, 1116 Northwest 43rd Street, Oklahoma City. I have to concur about the safety and courtesy issues. The biggest thing I believe we need, instead of more ordinances that can confuse the issue, is more education about how to cycle and how to drive around cyclists. As I rode in today, I could not even get cyclists to give me this, the three-foot rule. I had a red SUV pass me that his mirror just missed my ear, and that's scary in itself, and it's because when people just don't know to give us the courtesy. Sometimes they get upset with this, as the other council member mentioned last week, and sometimes we do tend to take our lane, because when we do take the lane, it makes the driver go around instead of just trying to squeak by, which scares us. And my point here is, instead of more ordinances, I think we need to try to educate both the, especially the have-to cyclists that are coming out now because they find it so much more affordable than having a car, that riding the wrong way is not good, and that just basically need to learn the traffic rules. And so my basic point is, is we need to kind of focus more on education of the existing rules than to try to make more rules that are confusing, like in ordinances proposed is that we should give runners three-foot inclinants when they're running in the same direction. Well, for the most part, runners and walkers walk against traffic, so now we've got a little confusion here, or do we have, do we need to give them three feet? And, yeah, or at least a proper clearance for safety, because clearances for a cyclist doing 12 to 14 miles an hour is a little bit different from a four-ton automobile doing 20 to 40 miles an hour. The bicycle I'm on today is my heavy bike, and it weighs almost 28 pounds, so one of the heaviest things on my bike is me and my water pack. So thank you for listening to my comments, and thank you for your attention.
Uh huh, thanks, William. Is that all the people that have signed up to speak? Okay, comments from council? Yeah, Pete?
My, my personal comment from last week elicited some responses, as you might imagine, but most of them were very, very informative and very, very understanding of what I was trying to say, and I appreciate it. It, it moved me from where I was to, to the point where I believe that we should, we should not enact these ordinances today, because I think they're, they may end up being more confusing than we have now, as a gentleman said, and I think we ought to, but, but I do think we ought to initiate an advisory committee of some kind to look into this with ACOG now, with some kind of a, a, a reporting back to us time, 90 days to get back to us or something. I, I just think that to, to approve these, although they're well-intentioned, and I suspect there may be some modification of them that would be incorporated in a new, broader ordinance, I, I think it's a, it's a, it will, it will add to the confusion. I think we've brought, I think we've brought the point that we're concerned about this forward well enough, that I think those that are on, that would be appointed to that committee would be, would be able to understand that it is something we're, that we're thinking about, and we want to do a better job of it. So I'm personally not going to vote to approve the resolution, but, but I would encourage us to form, for the mayor to form an advisory committee of some kind, work with ACOG, I see ACOG's in the room again today, and to try to, because there are, there are so many elements of it, that one that I hadn't thought about, the ACOG piece is, has the opportunity to try to, to standardize across the community whatever rules we make, and I think that's important, to make it clear, so I'm for the, the, the idea that we do, that we, we strengthen the ordinances, but I'm not in favor of changing them now before we have the committee.
Okay, yeah.
Mayor, if I could just really echo Pete's comments and, and some of the same, along the same vein, I've, I'm not a bicyclist, and every time I hear that expression, it's just like riding a bike, I never was a good bike rider, so I don't think that applies, but I've learned a lot in the last couple of weeks as we've gone through this conversation, and I was particularly unaware of the different ordinances as they cross municipalities. And so I would ask also that we form a committee, we've got lots of folks that are interested in participating, and work with ACOG to see if we can't come up with some, at least more uniform. I think, you know, people have talked about vehicles, and there are some rules that are slightly different, but generally, we all drive on the same side of the road, we stop at the same stop signs and stoplights and helmets, if we could just be consistent to the best of our ability and consolidate, maybe Pat even these principles, but consolidate bike safety and, and rise, rise, being a safety bike community to a new level.
Okay.
Your Honor, I have two comments, one, part of this ordinance variation, paragraph D, is, is just a recitation of what is a state law, and so if we ignore it, we've ignored a state law, and it causes Kenny some problems in enforcing this, or, or taking this to the right court system, or municipal courts, if it's not a municipal ordinance, so I think that's one thing to look at. Secondly, I have less confidence in our ability to move quickly to solve this problem at ACOG, you know, with the bicycle committee, which I think is important that we do that. But in the, in the meantime, I would like to suggest that we go ahead and adopt this ordinance because of the considerable time we may spend with ACOG trying to resolve this issue. I think we'd have to go back to the state highway department's manual to ensure that everything we do is complying with that first, or have it changed, which I think is, is a possibility, and I think if we bring in a committee that was ACOG-centric and had representatives of bicycle community here, I think is a great idea. But in the meantime, I think we've got to go forward this ordinance and get it on the books, because I have no confidence that we can do what Pete is suggesting quickly. And I think it's, it's a good suggestion, but I think the time factor needs to be addressed, need to be conscious of the fact that it may take longer than just 90 days to get an answer to this thing resolved.
All right, yeah, Laura?
Thank you, Your Honor. As a result of the discussion the last couple of weeks, on the Council Ward Three TV show this month, I had Mr. Elliott and Mr. Kramer come in and had them present really the vision for Oklahoma City to become a bicycle-friendly community. And to me, that is really the essence of what we're trying to do, is to move Oklahoma City in that direction while we are protecting the rights and the health of both the bicycle riders and the, the automobile owners. And so as I look at this, I think we, and part of that becoming a bicycle-friendly community would be to do, as Councilman White and Councilwoman Salyer have talked about, of having this dialogue put together with an advisory committee involving ACOG. And Jim, you mentioned we had a conversation, the possibility of having one of our staff people involved in that also?
Absolutely.
Okay, and so we've got that, I think, moving in that right direction, and so I see this as a two-pronged thing. We want to, I think, become a bicycle-friendly community, and nobody is, is saying we don't, and at the same time, this, these ordinances, I don't think really, they don't solve the problem, but they don't exasperate the problem, and so I can see us moving forward with a bicycle-friendly community and approving these two ordinance changes at the same time. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, any other comments or questions from council before we vote? David?
Your Honor, I appreciate Pat's effort on this, and I agree with these ordinances, however, I have just the opposite perspective as what's recently been suggested. I think we have a greater ability to move forward by looking at a more enhanced set of ordinances if we do postpone enacting these ordinances than if we were to pass them. I think there'll be enough emphasis from us to get something on, on the books, and then there'll be enough emphasis from, from the bicyclists to assist with this. So I'm, I agree with Councilman White and Salyer that if we postpone enacting these ordinances, there'll be a greater likelihood that we will proceed in a timely manner to get a more comprehensive review of this, and I certainly want to appreciate Hal McKnight coming in and speaking on behalf of the Trails Committee. They're doing a tremendous job with cycling and, and running and all that, so I, I hope we can really utilize their expertise in this process along with the individual cyclists, so.
All right.
Thank you.
I think at the very least, this, this ordinance has stimulated a lot of good discussion about, about it, so I mean, even if it, even if it fails, it's, it's, it's got, it's been very, very beneficial and very educating for me.
Pat, do you have a motion?
I have, I move approval of the ordinance on, on an interim basis until such time as we get this ACOG answer, standardization on our bicycle ordinances. I think that's something that's really important that we need to do, but I just don't have the confidence in our process that we'll get it done quickly. In the interim, I think we need to adopt this ordinance. And we have two changes in this ordinance, a lot of people mistake some of the word here as a change, it's not, it's a recitation of what's in the existing ordinances that we have. And so I think we only have two changes to think about, one is, is C, pardon me, D and E, and D is a recitation of a state statute, just gives us a different way to prosecute violators.
Okay.
I move approval.
I wonder if we could, we, we might consider a, a continuance until the last meeting in March, so we would have an opportunity to determine whether or not Councilman Ryan's right or not. I'm, I'm serious about that, I mean, that's, that's 60 days from now, and that's time to get it up, get the bones of this organization, this thing I'm suggesting up, and if nothing's happened, then.
Well, if nothing's happened, which is very likely, nothing will happen in 60 days, I, I think we ought to go ahead and put this ordinance on the books as an incentive to go ahead and do what we're doing. It clearly gives us a kick in the, wherever is appropriate, to get this thing done on a timely basis, and without this ordinance being in place, I think, well, let's sit back and relax like we've done with Pat.
That was just a thought.
Okay. All right, council ready to vote? We have a motion and a second. Cast your votes, and the item fails, 3/6. Item 10B is a resolution from Councilman Shadid.
And I appreciate the chance to, to speak about this, I think, because what it needs is more dialogue and, and more time. The issue before the DDRC in terms of demolition was whether all efforts were made, well, the, the statute says that every effort to preserve the historic buildings should be, should be made, not shall, which would be obligatory, or may, which would be least stringent, but somewhere in the middle, that it should, every effort should be made. The problem is that when the planning department, when the public, when we as a council learn about the plans some 30 days before the DDRC meeting, it makes it very, very difficult to ensure that every effort or every alternative is explored. That narrow window by itself makes that process and coming into compliance with the demolition ordinance virtually impossible. We, and that was reflected in the DDRC hearing, which is about over four hours long, those in favor of demolition put on a two-and-a-half-hour presentation, those opposed about five to 10 minutes. And that's the reason the public doesn't understand, they haven't had time to process it, there's not enough time for people to get organized and process all the different alternatives. And so you had two-and-a-half hours of really going over the need for increased parking, the need for everyone at Devon to be, you know, in immediate vicinity and be able to walk across sky bridges in case there's rainy days, despite the fact that throughout the Central Business District, people walk a couple of blocks, Continental Energy employees, people do it throughout the downtown, they park in parking garages and they walk a couple of, of blocks. And so we, we heard about, we, we heard a two-and-a-half-hour presentation, but there were four. And so we heard about, we heard a two and a half hour presentation, but there were four glaring omissions from that four hours at the DDRC, which are very troubling. There was no discussion, and Boyd, if you want to just pull up a slide, we were, we were told, listening to the presentation, that basically this is the only choice, and that this is what's done in cities, and this is just, this is really the only choice. But clearly, there is a movement across the country. Kathy was talking earlier about trying to increase floor-to-acre ratios, and in some cities, like Austin, you wouldn't be able to do this. But this is the Colorado Tower in Austin. You've got the parking on the first 13 floors, and then you have the office on top of it. Can you go to the next one? That's Minneapolis. No, that's Tampa. That's Tampa, same thing, parking on the bottom and then the office. So you have retail, and then parking, and then office. And then go to the next one, and that's Minneapolis. Same thing. I mean, there's, throughout the country, city after city, they're trying to, they're trying to increase their floor-to-acre ratios, and they're doing it in this manner. Then you preserve that other area to develop with higher density, brings in more property tax. You cannot, you're not going to convince me, even though it was presented to the DDRC, that anytime in any city in America, you build a 27-story building, you have to demolish an entire city block to put not one, but two parking garages. That's just not done in America, or throughout America, in the way that was presented. There was no discussion about tax increment financing or other incentives, and how those might be used to make preservation specifically of the bus station viable. There was no discussion whatsoever about the streetcar, not one reference, one fleeting reference to public transit, but nothing about the streetcar. And this city's $110 million investment, which is basically going to allow anyone to park virtually anywhere within the Central Business District along the streetcar route, and be dropped off at the front door of Devon. You have acres of empty lots in downtown. You could build a parking garage virtually anywhere, hop on the streetcar, be protected from the elements, and be dropped off at the front door of Devon. Not one word, not one word in that four hours about the streetcar and the city's massive investment to make exactly this kind of thing possible. No time to hear from other commissions. They were told that they'd like to, you know, one idea would be to hear from the Historic Preservation Committee or a commission, that they were going to meet on February 4th. They couldn't wait. They couldn't wait for the Traffic Commission. They were told that a traffic study was being done jointly between the OG&E and Heinz Development, and that it would be ready any day, any day, but they couldn't wait. We have, we send things much, much less, with much less impact to the Traffic Commission. But even though they were told that the traffic study was going to be done any day, and that they had had a phone call with the person doing the traffic study who said, "I have to warn you that the level of service on Walker is going to be very, very poor. You are not going to be able to have two lanes and bike lanes anymore." We just talked about bikes. Now we're, we're being told you'll have to go to four lanes. You're putting 6,000 cars in one highly dense area with all of these parking garages right next to a school, and you'll have to give up your two lanes and bike lanes and go to four lanes. But we couldn't wait for that traffic study, and we couldn't wait for that to go to the Traffic Commission and come back and get... The point is that we're not just talking about preservation of historic buildings. It's not, this development is not happening in a silo. It's going to rever, its consequences will reverberate through the system and force us, for example, to go from two lanes to four lanes, to get rid of bike lanes. It will have impact, for example, on CLACO, who's asking us for massive taxpayer investment to do a residential tower right next to this. There are things that I'm witnessing that make me question whether they're wanting to go forward now. And they have to be looking at this. CLACO has to be looking north of where they're talking about putting this residential tower with great apprehension, because you're creating something that looks like EK Gaylord. You're going to have a parking garage on one side of the street and a parking garage on the other side of the street. You're creating an alley which human beings just don't want to go down. It doesn't feel safe. It doesn't feel right. And it, and it is going to kill Walker. It is going to kill Walker, the street that we put our, our school on, and that is the implication. So it's not just that we should adaptively reuse historic buildings, which we should. It is that by not adaptively reusing historic buildings, you are then going to cause adverse consequences throughout development in the area. David Box told us that there's three tests. One, did something important happen in the building? Two, is it one of a kind? And three, can it be successfully repurposed? When asked, when, did something important in the building? He said, "No, it didn't. It was a problem for downtown. It killed vibrancy of downtown." Richard Tannenbaum said, "The clientele was a disaster." The class warfare language is very toxic. But when he says that it killed the vibrancy of downtown, as if putting a parking garage is going to enhance the vibrancy of downtown. Something important did happen in that building for decades. It was built in 1941. For decades, that was how people got in and out of Oklahoma City, in and out of Oklahoma. It was a transit, an important transit connection at a time when we didn't, not everybody rode planes the way they do now. Something very important did happen from 1941 until just recently. Second, is it one of a kind? Of course it is. It's unique architecture. There's nothing else like it, and it stands alone. And its staff has indicated that the entire block, much less this building, is eligible for the National Registry. It's more than 50 years old. It has significance, and it has integrity. It has excellent integrity, and it's individually eligible for Historic Registry. Third, can it be successfully repurposed? They said there's no economically viable use, and Prof. Takis in a letter to the DDRC said, you know, "If I got a high rate of return, like from a restaurant, I'd have a 2.5% return." Well, all the time, we're presented with things that have a low rate of return, like 2.5%, that we then use TIF dollars to get up to 6% and 8%. We do that virtually every other week, every month. We do that all the time with TIF dollars. Can you, can you advance? Not that one, but go to the next one. This is a Greyhound bus terminal in Savannah, Georgia, built in 1938. Ours is 1941. Now they repurposed it into a restaurant. You go to the next one? Same thing. That's it. 1938 Greyhound bus terminal. It's almost identical. And that, that is an example of what you could have with a residential tower right next to it, with the Montgomery right next to it, with the school, as opposed to a parking garage. There isn't economically viable use. The Century Center, right, which is now coming to life with the help of TIF funds, sat empty for 40 years. It was in disrepair. Perfect example of how you can take something and make it economically viable. We were told that this is going to be an urban campus, but there will be no retail on the east and west sides. We're told that it's the only way that you can afford these parking garages, that if a standalone parking garage would be about $15,000 per stall, but if you put it under the building like the ones I showed before, it'd be about $33,000. Well, that, that to me is, I mean, that's something you could use TIF. We just heard that we're going to incorporate this into a new TIF. We could make this work and achieve higher densification, unless, of course, all the TIF funds have been earmarked for the Convention Center Garage and the hotel, and then that's a different matter. But we're just left with the honor system. We just hear from the developer that we can't, it's 15,000 without, 33,000 with. There's no competing, there's no time for anyone to have any kind of competing evidence presented. There's just no time in 30 days to have a fair hearing. And that's why, that's why we, our planning department recommended against demolition. We are the appropriate party. We are an aggrieved party, because our decision-making will now be hampered. We will be trying to develop this area with two hands tied behind our back, or at least one, because of the decisions that are made here. We didn't have enough time, and therefore, it wouldn't cost any money. We already have lawyers on staff who are, who've written Supreme Court cases, who have done this for decades. So we can appeal it to the Board of Adjustment and simply ask the question about whether every effort was made and should have, should have been made in terms of this demolition ordinance. We have the resources. It won't cost any money. We, we present the case, they present their case, and then if it goes back, then we get to hear from the Traffic Commission, then we get to hear from the Historic Preservation Commission, then we have time to figure out how the streetcar is going to figure into all this and what that might make possible. And so I would, I'd ask for your approval.
We have three people that have signed up to speak. Actually, just two. David Pettijohn?
Good morning. My name's David Pettijohn. I'm with Preservation Oklahoma. The address is 405 Northwest 15th Street. I'm just here to reiterate what Councilman Shadid had to say. His arguments were very well spoken and pretty much reiterated what I was going to bring here today. I presented to the DDRC about the historic significance of the structures that were ultimately approved for demolition. Here we are talking about the Union Bus Station. One of the things that I would like to point out is the guideline that the DDRC is requested to follow when it comes to historic buildings. And it's very clear. It says, and this is exactly out of the guidelines, "In order to preserve the legacy of our past, structures and sites within the downtown districts that are significant to the history of the nation, state, city, or districts should be rehabilitated so that as much of the original fabric as possible remains intact." And when you look at that statement, and yes, it does say should instead of shall, however, it is still a guideline. It is something that the Downtown Design Review Committee should consider in their deliberation when they choose to demolish a historic structure. And what is the information that they can take to determine whether or not a structure is historically significant? Well, fortunately, the city of Oklahoma City already has a document in place that the planning department used to determine the historical significance of the Union Bus Station. They hired an expert, a historic preservation architect who was trained in the ability to determine the historic significance of a structure. And this survey, which was just done in 2009, determined that the Union Bus Station was individually eligible to be listed on the National Register of Historic Places because of its excellent integrity for its architectural style. As Dr. Shadid mentioned, it was built in 1941. It is an excellent example of the modern style of architecture, something that is unique to that part of Oklahoma City. The Downtown Design Review Committee also had several options that they could take place that Dr. Shadid referred to. This city has a Historic Preservation Commission comprised of experts in their field. Now, obviously, it would be a non-binding opinion, but it would still be an opinion nonetheless, a commission comprised of individuals who understand the historic significance of our city. And lastly, the Downtown Design Review Committee did not give the Historic Preservation Commission that opportunity, because it lies within their powers. It lies within the ordinance that created them, that they were created to provide these recommendations. They were, they, it is within their power to comment upon and provide recommendations to the City Council, Planning Commission, other city boards, committees, and commissions on actions of other governmental units with respect to the effect of such actions upon historic, architectural, and archaeological resources. The Historic Preservation Commission was not given that opportunity as well. And one important note, in the last five years, the Downtown Design Review Committee has approved the demolition of the oldest building in downtown Oklahoma City, India Temple. They have approved the demolition of one of the only internationally recognized structures, not only in Oklahoma City, but in all of Oklahoma, Stage Center. And just two weeks ago, they approved the demolition of the last remaining intact block of Oklahoma City's historic Main Street. So I ask you to please consider and approve Councilman Shadid's request for the city to appeal the decision to demolish the Union Bus Station. Thank you.
Michael Hinton?
Thank you, Your Honor and counsel. It's good to be in your midst again. My name is Michael Hinton of 1729 Northwest 3rd Street, Oklahoma City, Oklahoma, 73106. And by the way, I will point out, that's a temporary address that I'm using for now. I am in the process of moving back to the Regency. I'll move on with my point. It was last week on KTOK AM 1000 what caught my attention regarding the demolition of the old Greyhound Bus Station downtown Oklahoma City. If me, memory serves me correctly, I believe I heard that Councilmen Pete White and Ed Shadid are in opposition of the demolition of this, of the old facility. I come here today, Your Honor, to stand in support of preserving that facility. And it is, I'm in total opposition to the plans to demolish that facility, because it, to me, is part of Oklahoma City's history and historical past. And I just recently read two volumes of a book called The Splendid Advantage, and it brings me to tears, of an attempt of the urban renewal that was made in 1970s or 1980s for bringing about urban renewal of downtown, okay? That is, let's take a quick look. Destruction of the Katz Drugstore, the Carnegie Building, the Criterion Theater, the grand tour of the Biltmore Hotel, this destruction of the interurban rail system, only now they're running back trying to build a streetcar system. If those who destroyed the city rail system had been smart and had been visionaries, they could have kept the rail tracks in place and brought in high-tech trains. Also, I cannot forget the near attempt to the demolition of the Skirvin Hilton Hotel, the First National Center Bank Tower. All of this in wanting to build more parking garages to suit special interests and the car mentality. I perceive this as nothing more than greed, narcissism, arrogance, and self-serving with absolutely no regard for the historical values that this city was built upon. Your Honor and counsel, I got a question. What is the obsession to want to demolish historic structures that were a part of Oklahoma City's development? I ask all of you to take action like you did to save the Skirvin Hilton, to save the old Union Bus Station. This can be converted into a museum for visitors from the national, as well as the international community to come and see and read the historical records of Oklahoma City's public transportation.
Michael, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any comments or questions from council?
Mayor, I do have a couple of comments if I could start. I really believe that the resolution that we have before us today is a policy decision. I think it's one about process and whether or not this council chooses to respect the time and expertise and talent of our citizens, Downtown Design Review Committee, or if we want to make a, discuss a different process. And if we want to discuss a different process, I think maybe that's a debate for another time. I want to be very clear that my commitment to and passion for restoring and repurposing historic buildings in Oklahoma City goes back more than 30 years, with the purchase of first building I bought on Broadway that was boarded up, and today is a thriving retail business. With a lot of help from the National Trust for Historic Preservation that I've worked with for almost that long, I and many other people have worked to apply their Main Street principles to many successful revitalization projects, bringing back Oklahoma City's declining commercial districts into vital neighborhoods. Just those in Ward Six include Automobile Alley, Stockyards, the Plaza District, Midtown, Uptown 23rd, and Film Row. You know, Oklahoma City does have a bad history of urban renewal back in the 70s and 80s, but we also have a tremendous success story with revitalizing many of our commercial districts. And David, I appreciate your arguments very well, but I do want to be clear, we're not, the conversation was not about demolishing the entire block. The 420 West Main Street building stays, the pizza building stays, and the one in between. So that block, part of that block remains intact in its historic character. Growing Oklahoma City while preserving our cultural is one of the things that is most important to me in living in this community. So, you know, this is a really difficult subject, but I don't believe in this resolution. That being said, I have expressed some concerns about this project, and I really want... And I really want to thank our staff, as I said last week, for listening to those concerns and working with the developer and improving the project. We did get some concessions that helped make this, I think, a better project going forward. Final comment and of real concern to me is some things we heard today related to this project, and that's the potential for lost bike lanes on Walker. I'm very disturbed about how that might develop over time. And I just want to go on the record to say that I will work very hard to try my best to preserve the bike lanes and the walkability on Walker. Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else on Counsel? Do you have Pete?
This vote is really very difficult for me. As Jim knows, I've had, he and I have had conversations about preserving the bus station for years. Goes five, six, seven years ago, we've talked about this. And I've talked to everybody that has asked to talk to me on the side of going forward with the recommendation, not this recommendation, but the recommendation of the Downtown Design Review Committee. Nobody from the Preservation Committee's talked to me because most of those people know where my heart is. And I appreciate the fact that those people, the people that are developing, did make some changes by trying to put the sign in the corner where it kind of shows what used to be there. The idea of trying to do something about the lunchbox, the sign in the restaurant, I appreciate that. I think that's a, that's, that was a positive step. But if I wake up tomorrow and realize I voted to tear down the Union Bus Station, I wouldn't be happy with myself. And I'm going to have to vote. I don't think this will work. I don't think this will work. We have, we have a terrible track record of this kind of things working. They just don't work. The votes are all counted already. But I couldn't, I cannot live with myself if I vote to, I'm going to be in the minority, I'm sure, but I just, it's, it's, you know, I try to think with my head most of the time, but once in a while, I think with my heart. And I can't do this. I just can't vote for it.
All right.
I mean, I can't vote. I'm going to vote for it.
One quick comment. We need to recognize the difference between historic buildings and old buildings. I think that's the important distinction we need to make. And Pete can well testify to that. He's historically significant, perhaps, and he's old. He's got both qualifications.
I would, I would argue that we've made the decision that anything in the way is old rather than historic. I still chafe from the fact that we voted to tear down the Civic Center Park, grade it down, start completely over. All the artifacts, not all, the four or five of the artifacts are now back on display someplace. The rest of them are exactly where I said they'd be three years ago. They're in some warehouse somewhere and no plan to do anything with them. We, you look around this city, and we made those decisions. Those are, those buildings are old, they're not historic. And look, 20, 30 years went by, 30 years. This Court of Sure thing is saying it'll be, come to fruition in 25 years. We're building another wasteland downtown because we're not looking at, at trying to preserve some of our heritage. I don't fault the people that do it. I mean, I understand they, and like I said, I appreciate the fact that there was some movement back toward the historic significance. I don't want to make a personal issue about it with anybody that's involved in it. I just can't live with doing it. And so I'm going to vote for the resolution.
All right. Ed, you want to make a motion? Pete, you want a second? Okay. Ready to vote? All right, we're voting on Councilman Shadid's motion. And the vote is 2-7. Motion fails. Items from Counsel. James, you have anything today? Ed, anything else? Larry? Pete? I don't think your mic's on.
Representative Brand New Homeowners Association, Forest Park Neighborhood Association, Dorinda Rose and Niva Nethercutter here in the back. You can just stand up. I appreciate you being here. They formed a neighborhood association this month, and they're here at the council meeting.
Where's the neighborhood?
Forest Park Estates. It's southeast 44th and Eastern Avenue.
Okay, southeast 44th and Eastern Avenue. Thank you all for doing that and encouraging our neighbors.
Thank you.
All right. David? Meg? John? Pete, or Pat? All right. City Manager reports.
Jason Fairbrush is here to talk about some of the recent improvements we've made to the transit system. And I think he's going to introduce his new Assistant Director, too.
Yes, I sure will. Good morning, Mayor and Counsel. Would like to start off by introducing our new Assistant Director, Kevin Mulcahy. He joins us. He joins us most recently from a transit system in Virginia, actually. And we're looking forward to what he can bring to the table to help us to continue to improve our bus system here in Oklahoma City. So with that, I'd like to, like to go ahead and get started and just certainly thank you for the opportunity to present this transit system update to you. And I think we would all agree that there continues to be momentum for public transportation in Oklahoma City. And I think I have some exciting information to share with you this morning that will at least demonstrate how we've been able to implement enhancements to our bus system and some of the results of those enhancements. So I'll talk a little bit about our ridership, a little bit about our system reliability. I'd like to show you some of the new technology that's now available to our customers and then finish up by talking a little bit about our night service, which I'm pleased to announce began last night. So very, very, off to a good start with the night service. So I thought we'd start by taking a look at our system map. And you can see that on your screen. We're very proud of how the map here represents our bus system. If you'll recall, some of the recommendations from the transit system analysis, some of those recommendations included straightening our routes out, making the routes more direct, allowing for more connections within the system. And I think if you'll look at this map here, you'll see that. And again, we're very proud of the way the map has turned out. We actually were fortunate enough to receive a first-place award from the American Public Transportation Association for our system maps. So I wanted to make sure I had a chance to show it off a little bit this morning. Besides what you see on the map, though, as you'll recall, some of the other enhancements that we've been able to make, namely, have been frequency enhancements with our Monday through Friday fixed route service. All of our bus routes now run, I should say, almost all of our bus routes now run on 30-minute frequencies. We have two 15-minute high-frequency corridors between downtown and 23rd and Penn and downtown and the OU Health Sciences Center. And so frequency was a big part of those enhancements, but along with the clockface headways at the transfer center, which of course reduce wait time and make the system more predictable. And then another part of the study was looking at our bus stop placement. And I'll visit with you a little bit about some of the things we've done to address our bus stops as well. So as an organization, as an agency, I think we've done, we've made great strides in implementing some of those first-tier recommendations that came from that transit system analysis. And with the additional funding over the last couple of years from, from City Council and the support of the COTPA Board of Trustees, we feel like we've kind of moved to that next level. And we've been able to start implementing some of that, that second tier of recommendations that were made by our consultant, which was more frequency enhancements and beginning to look at evening service, Sunday service, and eventually more high-frequency corridors. So we're really pleased with the ability to continue to kind of work this plan and bring more enhancements online. So one of the things, of course, we want to know is we feel internally we've made some enhancements. We have a better system, but we really want to get some feedback from our customers. What do our riders think about the enhancements? And I think probably the best way to look at that is through ridership and what it has done since we implemented the system enhancements. And this chart that you have in front of you goes back to April of 2014. And what's significant about that is that is the month that we implemented our enhancements and changed our routes. The red line on your graph, of course, is calendar year 2014, and we're comparing average daily ridership for each one of those months back to the same month of the previous year in 2013. And you can see by the, the red line that we have exceeded average daily ridership each month since implementing our route changes when we compare back to the previous year. So we're very pleased with that trend. And we think it's a good sign that the changes we've been able to make have been successful in terms of garnering more ridership and providing a better system. Overall, we're up about 8% cumulatively on our Monday through Friday service. And then we actually had a couple of milestones over the last six months. September, you'll notice, we had almost 12,000 passenger trips on average per day. We actually had one day in September where we provided over 14,000 passenger trips in one day, which is essentially a new record for us as far as any of the recent history we were, we were able to look at. October was another significant month for us in that we provided cumulatively, cumulatively over 266,000 passenger trips in October, Monday through Friday. And again, that's another very significant number for us. We couldn't find a month where we had exceeded that cumulative total in any of the, the recent history. So we're very pleased with what we've seen from a ridership perspective. Now, I wanted to include and just talk quickly about our Saturday service. And I really wanted to include this graph really more of a, as a contrast to the Monday through Friday service because we did not make near the enhancements to the Saturday service that we did the Monday through Friday. In fact, the frequency enhancements were pretty limited. We don't have any of our Saturday routes that are actually on 30-minute frequencies. And although the ridership has held its own, we've seen about a, about a 3% increase overall. You'll notice that we don't have near the growth as we do on the Monday through Friday where, namely, the frequency enhancements came into play. So thought that might be a useful comparison for Counsel to look at this morning.
Jason, what happened in December of 13? Is, is that an anomaly?
There was bad weather on the weekends in December last year. We had a storm coming every weekend, like three weekends in a row.
Oh, that's right.
If you remember, that may have impacted on our Christmas sales.
Christmas shopping, exactly. Okay, that's just...
Yeah, it's exactly weather. The mayor's correct. And then the, the next slide here will give you a sense of our on-time performance. And I wanted to share these numbers with you for a couple of reasons. Is one, we are now reporting our on-time performance or our system reliability dramatically different than we've ever been able to report it in the past. And that's because of the AVL technology, the Automatic Vehicle Locators, that we have installed on each one of the embark buses. And so when you look at the numbers, admittedly, there, there's some work for us to do. But at the same time, I would say this is our bare bones baseline of where we've started at now that we can collect this data from our AVL system. So what this data represents essentially is every single stop in our bus system, almost 1,300 bus stops, and it's every time a bus during the day hits that stop. And we consciously made the effort to begin tracking our on-time performance in this fashion because we really feel like it's, it's a better representation of what the customer experiences. And so in order to become and improve our, our performance, we want to make sure we're measuring exactly what it is that our customers are experiencing when they're out there trying to catch the bus. A couple of things that are, that are worth noting is for a bus to be considered on time, the bus can be no more than one minute early to the stop and no more than five minutes late. So that's kind of the threshold that we're looking at. The other thing that I think is worth pointing out is we did start in July and August when we kind of first started keeping score this way at about 60% on-time performance. But you can see that we've actually increased that over a six-month period by almost 11%. So I feel confident that we've got our, got a handle on it. We are paying more attention to it. We are doing things to improve our on-time performance. And although January is not complete, through the 25th of January, our on-time performance was actually 76%. So for the first time since we've, again, began tracking data like this, we've exceeded our performance goal. And then lastly, I did want to talk to you just a little bit about our performance goal. Again, this is a baseline for us for this year. We're striving to achieve an overall on-time performance at 75% or greater. And talking with our consultant from Nelson Nygaard, I posed the question to him and said, you know, based on what you know about our system, the way that we are tracking our on-time performance, what would you recommend? What's a reasonable expectation? And he had indicated that 85% over the long run would be a, certainly be a reasonable stretch goal for us. So we will be looking forward to adjusting that goal upwards as we move forward.
Jason, I'm sorry, are we still using Nelson Nygaard? Do they work with us from time to time on continuing to tweak this and...?
You know, we haven't used them too much since April. Although, you know, when setting some on-time performance goals, and they're, they're absolutely there for questions from time to time. As we look at potential other expansions, you know, if we decide to look at other options for evening service, we'll certainly bring them into the fold on that.
And it just felt like that was a very good consultant selection. I think they did excellent work for us.
Yeah, I would agree. And so now that we've looked at a little bit of quantitative data, I wanted to share a couple of survey responses with you as well. We were fortunate enough to be able to work with the Planning Department, who was actually working with the University of Oklahoma College of Public Health. And they were working on a survey project to determine since the service enhancements and route changes, has accessibility improved for customers of the bus system? And in particular, they were looking at access to like grocery stores, healthcare, opportunities for physical activities such as parks and so forth. And some of the questions from their survey, we thought, you know, really gave us a good sense of what our customers were saying about our service enhancements. So wanted to share some of those with you. The first question here, what's your impression of the route changes? You'll notice that about 52% of the survey respondents indicated that the routes, routes are better than they were before. 16% about the same, 20% worse, and then 12% had no opinion. At the same time, when the, the question was asked to the customers if they spend less time waiting for the bus since the service changes, almost 60% agreed that they spent less time waiting for the bus, which of course was one of our objectives of, of rolling out the enhancements that we made. 17% had no opinion, and then 24% disagreed with that statement. And then the last survey question here is simply, does the bus take me where I want to go? And you'll notice that 83% of the survey respondents, the customers on the bus, indicated that yes, the bus does take, take them where they need to be. And so from a transit agency perspective, obviously, when you're allocating resources and wanting to make sure your buses are running where people need to go, this is very, very good news for us. As I mentioned earlier, another recommendation from the Nelson Nygaard study or the Transit System Analysis was to take a look at our bus stop placement. And the consultant had a couple of, or actually three observations for us. One is they had indicated you have too many bus stops out there. People are generally willing to walk a little bit further if they can get a faster, more reliable service. So we have trimmed back the number of our bus stops from an excess of 1,500 to right around 1,285 system-wide. The other thing that our COTPA Board of Trustees has done is they have adopted a new bus stop policy that we are transitioning to. And the new bus stop policy essentially indicates that buses will only stop at designated stops. Prior to the bus stop policy, we would stop at any stop in addition to any far corner. And as you can imagine, depending on the route, that can certainly have an impact on service and slow the route down. So, and then lastly, one of the, the items the consultant had mentioned is that when they were talking with stakeholders, stakeholders had indicated that the bus stops were not very visible, that in fact, a lot of the signage is kind of blended in with the background of the city, and you just really had to look for some of the bus stops. So I'm pleased to report that Phase 1 of our bus stop sign replacement project is complete. And we have replaced all of the Metro Transit signs with the new blue embark bus signs that you see now. You'll notice that the, the blue is much more visible. It's, the signs are made of a highly reflective material. They're all attached at a specified consistent height. We're very pleased with how the project turns out and turned out and hope you agree that they are much more visible than what they, what they were in the past. The second phase of our signage project will actually bring an additional level of information available to our riders that really have never been available at bus stops before. And our second phase, which we'll be getting shortly, will entail going back and attaching route information signs. This is the, the flag-style sign you see on the far right of the example on your screen. Essentially, it will advise customers what routes serve that particular stop. In addition to that, we'll be attaching a unique bus stop ID to each one of the bus stop signs. And the significance of that bus stop ID is that is what our customers will use to be able to receive a text alert of when the next bus is going to be arriving at that stop. I have an example of what our customers will see if they use our texting service. And I will say, this service is available now. However, our unique stop IDs are only available for our major time points that are printed in our schedule. So once we complete Phase 2 of the sign project, this service will be available at any stop in the system. And so if you'll look here at the, the example, it's pretty simple to do. A user or a customer would simply type embark, followed by the, the route, which in this case is Route 3, the unique stop ID. And then you'll notice what... And then you'll notice what is returned in a text message is the expected arrival time of the next two buses. The other thing that I think is neat about this application is you'll notice it has the ability to refresh. So as you're sitting there waiting on the bus, you don't have to send another text. You just simply click the R button, refresh, and the system will automatically ping the bus based on the location and the travel speed, give a new updated estimate of when the bus will arrive. So again, it's neat technology. We're very excited about being able to bring it not only to our current customer base, but hopefully it will attract new riders to the system that maybe haven't tried this before because of some of the uncertainty of, you know, when do I catch the bus and have I missed it or is it early? And then the last portion of the sign project is attaching that very bottom sign you see. It's a customer information panel. And the next slide here kind of gives you a better idea of the information that will be on that panel. But essentially, again, we'll, starting at the top, you'll notice the different routes that serve the stop are highlighted along with a simple line map with the major time points within the route, a schedule, I'm sorry, a table showing the frequency of the routes that serve that area, as well as some information about how to reach embark, how to work the texting capabilities, and a instructions on how to download our Embark Connect app, which I'll talk about here in just a few minutes. So that is kind of an overview of our sign project. At the same time, we're putting improved signage at the bus stops. We're also implementing our bus shelter project. And as you know, we identified 31 shelters across the city. I'm sorry, 31 new locations for shelters across the city. We received our first shipment of 15 new shelters in December, and we have installed our first shelter at the Belle Isle Shopping Center location on the west side of Classen. So if you get a chance, you're up in that area, we certainly encourage you to check that out. There's a picture of the bus shelter on the screen here. You'll notice that the shelters are, again, a modern design. They're three-sided. They have security lighting. They'll have a trash receptacle. And besides the ad box, one thing I wanted to talk about was the customer information display case that you see there. And for purposes of the presentation, we have a photoshopped image of what the system information might look like, and it's going to be available to our customers. This next slide will actually kind of give you a better idea of what that, what information is available. Again, it's similar to what we're going to put on the bus stop poles, but a little bit more information. Again, route information, a simple line map. The system map will now be included at each one of the shelter locations along with a detailed schedule of the routes that serve that location. And then up in the top right, what we're calling the neighborhood map, what we're really looking forward to doing here is providing a kind of a map that shows just the proximity of the bus shelter. And then we want to put in, draw in any other connections that might be available. So not only transit connections, but if there's a bike lane connection or a trail connection, we want to be able to drop those in. And then, of course, in the bottom right is just very similar information to what we looked at when we looked at the bus stop poles themselves. So moving on to some of the additional technology I wanted to share with you. At the same time that we've been implementing these system enhancements and working on the signage project and bringing our AVL technology onboard, we've also been in the midst of a rebranding strategy. And I know council is familiar with that. But some of the new technology, including our website, has really given us a lot of different platforms to try to get our new brand out there and make customers aware of embark and who we are. One thing I wanted to share with you this morning was our Journey Planner. And you can see at the right side of your screen there, the Journey Planner that we made available, I believe it was about last fall. And essentially, it kind of takes the guesswork out of trying to plan your trip. So if a customer is new to the system, rather than looking through schedules or trying to figure out what bus do I need to take by looking at an entire system map, we've been able to partner with Google Transit and essentially provide a platform for where all the person has to do is enter where they're leaving from, where they want to arrive at, and the time and date that they want to make their trip. And the Google Transit, the Journey Planner, will actually put that itinerary together for them. So the next slide here is actually a look at that same Journey Planner only on the mobile device. And we know that about 50% of the hits we get at our website come from a mobile device. So it's imperative, at least in our mind, that we have this available to anybody with a smartphone or a tablet. And so in this case, here's an example where if we wanted to take a trip, use our Journey Planner, starting at City Hall, which is 200 North Walker, want to take a trip to the Science Museum, and we would simply enter that information along with the date and time. And then you can see the Journey Planner will return an itinerary to us. So we know we could make about a seven-minute walk to the Transit Center, get on Bus 3 at Bay P. We would ride roughly 27 minutes to Martin Luther King and 50th Street and a two-minute walk to the Science Museum. So we really are pleased with the way the Journey Planner has turned out, and certainly, again, think this is one of those tools that's not only going to benefit our current customers, but again, help us reach out to people that have maybe not used the bus system before. Now, in full disclosure, I will say that our Journey Planner today, if you try it, is offline as a result of us updating our new schedule information. So as you recall, last night was our first night for evening service. Bus Route 11 increased to 30-minute frequency. We had multiple time point changes within some of the other routes. So we're in the process of uploading those new files to Google. So just give us a day or so, but then please do try it out and see what you think of our Journey Planner. We encourage you to look at it. And then the last, oh, let's see, I skipped a slide there. The last piece of technology to mention is our Embark Connect app. And this app is very similar to the OKC Gov. that I believe Public Information and Office, Public Information and Marketing presented a couple of weeks ago. But essentially, it's an application that's available to our customers that allows them to report directly to us issues that they see with our system so that we can react and respond faster than if we're left to discover them on ourselves. The application allows a customer to take a picture, for example, of whatever the issue is. It's automatically geo-coded along with the time. If the customer wants a follow-up notification of when the issue's been resolved, we can make that information available to them as well. We've had about 1,000 of these applications downloaded since we launched it back early in the spring, so. And then the last topic for this morning's update is really to talk about night service. And again, last night was the first night we've ran our pilot program that was approved by city council and the Board of Trustees, running two buses from 7:00 PM to midnight on one-hour frequencies. We run Route 23 on the north side of town. That's our 23rd crosstown. And then 11 on the south side of town along Southwest 29th. They connect at the west end of the city, out at the Westgate Marketplace between Rockwell and MacArthur along Reno. And then there's also a connection at the Transit Center. This next slide here will give you a sense of what the routes look like on a map. I know that you're familiar with these and have seen them before. But one thing I wanted to talk about a little bit is when we first discussed the opportunity of this pilot program, and we talked about, you know, the fact that it's a very limited evening service, just two routes out there. But we wanted to try to maximize our coverage area. So that's one of the reasons why we went with a north and a south side crosstown. But then we also wanted to take advantage and try to leverage our existing link service that we already have out, providing very limited bus service until midnight during the week. So we also took a look, like I said, at our link service. And where we used to have about eight designated stops with that service, we now have 15. And you will notice that along 23rd, if you see the little link symbol there at North Meridian and at, I guess it's going to be Villa, you'll notice those are the new designated stops for our link service. So we have three along Route 23. We have two along Route 11 on the south side. And the idea there is to try to, again, provide as much coverage area as we can, as many connections as we can, and gain whatever synergies exist from that existing link service and combine that with our fixed route regular service that we're running. The next map is actually meant to give you an idea of the area that that link service covers and an illustration of where all of the individual designated link stops are. And the one I wanted to call out was we added a new link stop to OCCC. So there will now be a link bus serving OCCC on the hour, every hour, from 7:30 to 11:30 PM. And then students from OCCC can use that link service to get anywhere in the link area, but then also transfer to one of the fixed route buses at the Transit Center. So we're very grateful to be able to integrate OCCC into the mix as far as evening service goes.
I'm pretty sure OCCC is really grateful to you for working with them on that. That was such a huge priority was to let students be able to take public transit for night classes. So thank you so much.
And then the last map I wanted to share with you is our paratransit coverage for evening hours. You know, we do have customers that due to, you know, physical limitations cannot ride our regular fixed route bus service. And so we also provide our paratransit service within three-quarters of a mile of that fixed route service that's now running from 7:00 PM to midnight. So again, this is another group of customers that will benefit from putting evening service out on the street, and we're certainly looking forward to further developing that paratransit service along with our fixed route service. And then the last slide I have for you this morning is to give you a sense of what our goal should be. How at the end of this pilot program are we going to determine whether it's a success? And there's a lot of factors that will go into that. But, you know, one of the ways we at least want to look at it is through riders per service hour. That's kind of an efficiency measure for us. The more riders we have on a bus in any given hour that we're out there operating it, that's a good thing for us as a transit agency. So we want that number to be high. You can see that from the history here on the chart, you know, between 17 and 18 passengers per service hour is about what we average on our Monday through Friday service. So again, not having ran evening service, having it being a very limited evening service, we may be off-base here, but at the same time, we still wanted to have a goal. So in our mind, we are, our goal is for our evening service to produce at least half the ridership that we typically receive during the day. And again, that's based on the fact that it is a limited evening service. It's a new service, but nonetheless, we feel it's important to put a goal out there and see how we measure up to it. And so with that, that is all the information I had for council this morning, but I will be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? It was very, I think, thorough, and I love the metrics, you know, because it's easy to make broad suggestions about how we can do better, but I think to show the sophistication and allowing the information to be out there to defend the current routes and the current frequency and seeing that we're doing the best we can with what we have available to us, I think is both enlightening and refreshing to me. David, do you want to say something?
Well, just a couple of comments. You know, I think the on-time performance is really very good. I've never been in a situation where I've had to wait more than five minutes past the expected arrival time. So at least the routes I take, I think the percentage is above the 70% for sure. And even this morning, the bus driver, you could tell, was slowing down just so we would not get there too early at some of the stops. So very good. One thing I think we need to, as a city, begin to encourage each other to do is ride the bus when you don't have to, even though you have the ability to drive. If you'll ride the bus, more revenue that the bus system receives allows us to expand the service. And I was just looking at some numbers, you know, given we probably have, Jim, maybe 40,000 to 50,000 people that work in the downtown area.
In that range.
If we could get 20,000 new riders, that would generate $1.2 million a month in additional revenue, over $14 million a year in additional revenue. That would just be put back into the system to allow us to expand the service even further. So we have control over how much we want to expand our bus services by how much we're willing to utilize it. So anyway, that's the only comment. And then you might share the story, you had a complaint not too long ago about a bus being too crowded.
Yes, we did. After implementing our service changes, I did receive a complaint that the bus was too crowded. So we'll tend to take those and be okay with them.
All right. Anybody else? Yeah, Ed?
Well, there's too much good stuff in there to talk about. I mean, so much good stuff. Implementing the Nelson Nygaard stuff is incredible. The night service, I'm certainly excited about, and I want to echo what David's talking about. Those who want night service, please use Route 23 and Route 11. Those that are going out late at night on 23rd Street, please use the 23rd line. One thing I was especially excited about was to see the bus shelters protecting our riders from the Oklahoma City weather. It seems like we could, money aside, that's another issue, but it seems like we could capture some economies of scale or some efficiencies as we have a Maps 3 program that's laying down sidewalks throughout the city. We have a 2007 bond that's laying down sidewalks throughout the city. It seems like we could identify which one of those projects are along your bus lines. And then whether the money, we come out, whether we can figure out where the money comes from or not, at least if you could, it seems like you would put the footprint, which is how big?
Yeah, roughly about maybe 12 by 8, maybe slightly larger than that, as far as the actual pad that would be needed for a shelter.
Yeah, so even if you didn't have the money for the bus shelters today in 2015, you might five years from now, and if you got the concrete pad down now while you had the crews out putting the sidewalks in, you'd capture a lot of efficiency that way. I wonder if there might be some utility of just having the Maps 3 Sidewalk Subcommittee look at it, identify the ones that are on your, I know the money isn't another issue, but at least identify where those, where that overlap is.
Right. You know, we have done some work with Public Works in that area, and now anytime there's a GO bond project that widens the street, I believe some of the street scape projects also, you know, we are weighing in on those projects early in the design to try to do just that. But, you know, we're certainly, again, like you say, you know, money's always another issue, but we're certainly open to working with them and having a seat at the table and at least making that information available. But these are our bus routes, and this is where we would recommend, you know, potential future locations.
Great. Thank you.
We can certainly do that.
One of the things I'm excited about is how excited Jason and Kevin are about their ability to implement new services and make the transit system better. So I do appreciate your enthusiasm.
Thank you.
And we did kind of gloss over their latest tagline, which was "See you later" for the later services. I kind of like that.
And I just downloaded the app. It's not hard to do, so.
Okay, fantastic. All right. I've used it myself a few times, so I think you'll find it very easy to use. All right. Thanks a lot.
Thanks, Jason.
You're welcome.
I do want to highlight the sales tax collections for January. Sales tax was up 4.2% over the previous year, and I think the highlight of this whole thing is that year-to-date to the first seven months of the year were just 0.3% over target on the sales tax. So that's good news. I think the over, the cloud that's out there is the economy that's, there's a couple of things that's going on. One is the volatility of the stock market. It's up and down. I just checked. It's down 355 points today, and, you know, it's just been up 200 points, down 200 points. It's been all over the place. But I think the most significant issue is the price of oil. We had an opportunity a couple of weeks ago to do meetings with Standard and Poor and Moody's as we prepared for the refunding that we're going to do on some GO bonds. And we've got our presentation about, you know, how our reserves and all the things going on with the city. And they were politely interested in that, but what they really wanted to know is how the price of oil is going to affect this. As part of our presentation, we had Russell Evans with us from OCU, who's our economist that we do bring in for our annual budget, and we always have him for our briefings with Moody's and Standards and Poor, and that's what they wanted to hear. And, you know, the answer is, is how long is the price of oil going to stay down? I just checked this morning. It's at 45.52. That's not as low as some people had feared it was going to go. And how does it affect Oklahoma City? And I think short-term, it could be a positive bump to Oklahoma City because people are saving $20 a week or whatever they're saving on gas prices. Most likely, they're probably putting that in the... Most likely, they're probably putting that into some type, they're probably spending it, and it's probably going into something that we're getting tax, sales tax on, because right now, we don't get sales tax on those monies that are just being spent for fuel. But long-term, if the energy sector in Oklahoma City does, if they do dial back some, that could have an impact based upon their investment or the number of employees that they have, and that could have a negative impact. But the bottom line is that Russell didn't believe that this is a multi-year process. It's going to be, go on for a number of months, and I think most economists believe that, that oil isn't going to stay at this level for a long-term situation. It's not going to go back to 100 short-term, but it might go back to 55, up to 55 or 60, which would, I think, offset some of the, and I see the Devon people out there listening to me, but that would, you know, if it's 55 or 60, there's probably more of a chance of some reinvestment than if we keep it down to 45. The answer is, we don't know how long the oil prices are going to be. You know, it's OPEC that now is impacting our city budget as we go forward. There's a lot of factors out there that influence us. It's something we need to watch carefully as we go forward, and we'll talk more about this in our budget workshop that we'll be holding next month. All right.
We have executive session. We'll be back.